So I'd like to call this meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board to order. I, let's see here, I have to read this. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV. I'm sorry?
I love the jacket with Bob's gun on.
John's too serious. John's too serious. I had to go, I had to go find my St. Patrick's Day jacket, John. That's why I was.
You have to use it more than one day a year, right?
I, I didn't get to wear it yesterday, so I had to bust it out for today. Sorry.
That's perfect, perfect, Bob. So this meeting is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. It is recorded for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board should state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. At this evening's meeting, we'll allocate a total of 10 minutes for public comment with a maximum allotment of two minutes per speaker. Speakers will join the Zoom meeting at the appropriate time from the waiting room. We will let you speak, let you into speak, subject to the direction of the Chair. After you speak, we will have you leave the Zoom meeting while the next speaker is allowed to join. You will be able to watch the meeting live on RCTV and YouTube. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. Phil Pacino will be the Board Secretary. And now, per the Director of the State, I need to ask all remote participants to identify himself or herself. John Stempak.
Phil Pacino.
Dave, you need unmute.
Yep. Dave Hennessy.
Dave Talbot.
Bob Coulter.
Great. Thank you. Uh, we're moving into public comment. Uh, the Citizens Advisory Board, Jason, welcome.
Welcome. Uh, no comments at this time.
Okay, good. Um, and I was the representative to the, to the CAB. And we'll see many of the presentations that were made by the staff this evening as well. Very excellent presentations. See, do we have any liaisons? Uh, we don't have anyone here this evening from the Board of Select Board. Uh, so I'd like to move to public comment. I believe we had an individual who wanted to comment. Is he in the waiting room?
Yes, he is. Go ahead and get him. Bob Connor.
Hello, Bob. Hello, Bob, are you there? Mr. Connor?
Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, hello.
Yes, hi, hi. You're, uh, you're here with us in front of the Board if you'd like to speak.
Yes, uh, my comment is, and I have a question. In prior meetings, the public could ask questions during the meeting and participate.
Bob, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Mr. Connor?
Hello, yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, hello, Mr. Connor?
Yeah, hello, hello.
He must be on, uh, it must be the YouTube as well. He might have two things going on at the same time, Bob.
Oh, how's that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, I did, sorry. So anyway, in prior meetings, the public could ask questions during the meeting and participate on a real-time basis, which we appreciate. Uh, it made us feel like our voices were being heard and as the decisions were being made. But the new policy that, that I've read changes this dramatically, so, uh, three, three questions. The first one is, will this end after COVID is over and the meetings are hopefully alive? The second question is, is this because the Select Board does it this way and other town, town and government groups does it? And, uh, the last comment, a question is, uh, I believe the last meeting, uh, no questions were allowed, which seems to be in contradiction with, uh, Policy 19. So I was wondering why no questions were allowed. So that, that's it.
Sure, Bob. Uh, let me answer those questions for you. In the last meeting, I moved the public comment to the end of our meeting because we started late. We were a half hour late and we had multiple hours worth of material to go through. It was one of the most intense meetings we've had in a long time. So I moved the, you can go back and look at the video and I moved the public comment to the end of the meeting at that time. Uh, so people were welcome to comment at then. I, we did, I did change it to the Select Board type of function because I felt that the Select Board, uh, had a very, uh, effective process where people are allowed to, to speak, but again, they're only allowed to speak at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, and again, it's in, I think it's for the purposes of efficiency and being able to get through all the different things that are on the items and to allow people to express opinions at the beginning of the meeting. And so we've adopted that, uh, same strategy. When we, uh, end COVID and we're back into, uh, live sessions, everyone is welcome to attend live, but even at those meetings, um, the time to speak or the, being able to allow, be allowed to speak is up to whoever the Chairman is at that time. Uh, and again, it's, it's many, mostly for the purposes of just efficiently conducting a meeting. Uh, because if you looked, looked at the number of people we had at some of our previous meetings, there were 15 to 30 people involved. And, uh, that would stretch us if everyone spoke. That would stretch us way past our, what is it, 10:30, uh, finish time for these meetings. And so we're trying to really just be as efficient as possible while still allowing the public to speak on whatever issue they'd like to speak on. Does, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, I understand when you have a lot of people. I guess, uh, for some reason, I thought, maybe it wasn't the last meeting, but for some reason, I thought no questions, no comment was allowed at all, so. But I can't pinpoint the date, so let's, I'll let it pass, I guess.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, we do leave it open for public comment and, um, but, uh, thank you. We'll, we'll try to, again, we're just trying different formats here to be as efficient as possible.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
I'd like to move on to, um, item number three, approval of the Board Minutes. If I could have a motion, please?
Yeah, ready? Move that the Board of Commissioners approved the meeting minutes of November 19th, 2020, December 3rd, 2020, and December 16th, 2020, on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
Uh, any discussion or are we just moving to a roll call vote? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Hennessy, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Talbot, aye.
It's Coulter, aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a personal privilege to talk about the minutes for a minute.
Yes, please, please call Mr. Pacino.
Okay, so I, you know, reviewed the minutes here for these, these three months. You know, Mary Ellen O'Neill, former Commissioner, former Chair of this committee, reminded us that we're behind in the minutes. We need to catch up with the minutes. You know, I didn't want to throw Tracy under the bus the last time, but I'm about to now. Now, I've been asking Tracy to get those minutes to me and they've not been coming. So, you know, we, it's no reason why we can't have the minutes within 60 to 90 days up on the website. I also think that maybe we should put a link on the website to the RCTV, uh, broadcast. So people can actually get on, get right on there, right to that link. Maybe it's there already. I don't know. I didn't, didn't get a chance to do much besides my taxes today. But, you know, and, and one of the other things, I, I got a personal request. When we do sentences, please skip two spaces between each sentence opposed to one. Makes it a lot easier for me to read.
Uh, Mr. Pacino, I think those are all great suggestions and you're absolutely right. We've struggled for a long time trying to get the minutes done, um, on time and, um, we, we, we've had issues with that. Uh, I think the, uh, we've also moved to a different software, correct me if I'm wrong, to do some of the translation, uh, more effectively. Is that correct?
I think we're up to date now with the minutes because open meeting, we're three months. So it's three months, so this is March. So you reviewed, so we're up to date now. And we will stay up to date. And Janet had, uh, has gotten us a transcription company that we can take the tapes from RCTV, get them transcribed, and then we still have to scrub them here. But we're hoping that it'll go a little bit faster, but we are up to date at this point.
Hey, thank you. Uh, if there's no other questions, I'd like to move on to the General Manager's report.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, uh, community update will, will go first. Uh, the Heat Pump 101 Customer Webinar, we did hold that on March 2nd. It was very well attended with 125 live participants and 250 views of the webinar recording. It's also being aired on four of the community TV stations. You should check that out. The high school art contest submission period ended on, um, the 15th. We had 21 students submitted the artwork. I think I sent everybody here, all of the CAB and Board members, all of the art. It was quite inspiring. Uh, our theme this year is resiliency. This will be the fifth year that we have used, um, high school art students for the, for our cover to reflect our themes and our themes have been built on over the years and we continue. The virtual, oh, and so, uh, Joyce came up with a great format for voting and you'll be getting that tomorrow. And so you can select five and send them back and then we can pick a cover. And we usually, you know, reward all the, um, the students that send in submissions and then we, uh, last year, I think we picked different theme topics for, to, to make more winners. So we'll probably do something similar this year. The virtual EV workshop now, uh, that we're getting, we're kind of going through all of our, our queued up, uh, backlog here. We're going to have that on April 27th at 7:00 PM. And we can talk a little bit more as, uh, we come up with the format of that workshop and send it out to everyone. The RMLD is applying for the mass state grants that are out there for the EV charging stations at multiple locations. While the Level 3s are due tomorrow, uh, I just remind everybody that while the Level 2s are not due tomorrow, the money is going to run out very quickly. We have a number of sites from Redding, uh, and we appreciate that the Board of Selectmen gave us authorization as well as Greg and I attended the Board of, um, Library Trustees and we got their permission. Uh, as well Wilmington has two sites, uh, that they have submitted. So all that is getting done tomorrow. IRD has been working around the clock to, to make sure that those submissions are in. So fingers crossed that we get them. There's not a lot of them, um, but we're, we're hopeful that we'll be a winner of some. We're also working on the 2020 Annual Report. That's why we're picking that cover from the high school. Joyce will be reaching out, um, to you about photos, photo updates, Bob Coulter, uh, for an update on photo if anybody else wants new ones. And I'll let Wendy discuss what the audit schedule is going to be as part of her presentation. But because we've made a full transition now to a calendar year, you know, we're not doing the Redding April Town Meeting Presentation. Uh, we'll probably have the interim report out in June and so I'll be doing a fall presentation. But, and then I go around to all the Board of Selectmen, so I have asked the CAB in the last meeting to get me those appointments. And we not only will go over the 2020, but we'll also, uh, give highlights all the way up to the present day of whenever I give those, that presentation. So, uh, stay tuned for that, but that's coming up. All right. Thank you so much.
Uh, if you, if, um, you haven't taken a, a look at the artwork, uh, please do. It's just fabulous. The students have done an incredible job. Um, and there's such talent in, in every one of us. Just wonderful. Okay, I'd like to move on to the review of, uh, policies. And, uh, as you know, this is a sort of recurring theme where we review the policies on an ongoing basis to try and keep up with the times. And perhaps we can just walk through each one of them and then we'll, we'll have to do a roll call vote for each policy to approve it. So, uh, Mr. Pacino, could you please read the first one?
Okay, move the policy number four, number four, smoking be scheduled for the next periodic review without change.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
What does this mean? What are we, what are, what is, what is the, the meaning of the, the motion? Are we moving it forward in the meeting or what are we doing?
Uh, you, uh, it's to approve the policy as it's been changed. You've, you should have received all of these different policies, uh, prior to the meeting in terms of what they looked like.
Grab a hand up. I can, that chair.
Yeah, Colleen, please.
Yeah, so I sent everyone the table of all the policies and over time, we've been going through them and what we had decided a while ago is that because a lot of these policies were written like in the 1990s that we would put on a three-year re- review time period. So this policy four, there's no recommendations for change. So we're really just saying no change. It stays as it is. And we're looking for the next review date in, uh, March of '24. Now, if any of the laws change with respect to, I mean, this covers e-cigarettes, vaping and things like that. If any of the laws change, then certainly this will be brought forward to the Commission again, but we're, I'm not recommending any changes to Policy Four. It's just a new revision date for three years.
Okay, have, yes, Bob, please?
You're on mute.
Uh, mute, yeah.
When you hire new employees, there a restriction on smoking?
Yes, we have, uh, in the, everyone's career development plan, they have to be familiar with all of the Board policies. And, uh, they are restricted to, uh, you know, you can't smoke in the vehicles. It's as it's stated in the policy. Am I answering your question?
No, I, I just, new employees, you know, when you, when you're hired, you, you, like when police and fire, that, no, non-smoking is the standard now.
Yes, we have non, or, or on the grounds either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if, uh, if I could call for a roll call vote on policy number four, please? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Talbot, aye.
Mr. Coulter, aye.
Thank you. Uh, policy number seven, paid sick leave.
Move the policy, uh, number seven, paid sick leave be scheduled for the next periodic review without change.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Do you have a discussion? And Colleen, would you, uh, provide any, any comments on this?
Yeah, there's no change request on this. Um, it was scrubbed, scrubbed again for any legal changes. I'm requesting a March, um, 2024 date for the next review. And I, and I will keep that schedule that I gave you. I'll, as I update that, I'll send you, um, I'll send you the update so that you know what's next up on the queue.
Okay, uh, could we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Pacino, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Thank you. Policy eight, other post-employment benefits, OPEB liability trust fund.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners approved Policy Eight, Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB Liability Trust Fund as presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Second.
Discussion?
John, a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Is, is this going to be overseen by the Town Trustee? This part, it, I just didn't, I, you know, I know we moved the pension, but they're going to oversee it. Is this a component of it or is it independent?
Independent.
It's independent, okay. I, uh, why didn't this shift over with the other pension and benefits?
Wendy, do you want to speak to that, the?
Hi, Bob, actually, this is the, uh, the new trust that was just signed by the Board of Commissioners is the OPEB specifically.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, I didn't know it was independent. Yes, I, I, I didn't know if this was a separate portion that, that came in that was just a smaller option. That was the question. So, thank you.
Well, it's the same, it's the same, uh, other post-employment benefits. It's just some legal language got changed in the policy to reflect, uh, proper Chair persons and, uh, to say that the trust is now with the Town. The custodian is the, um, treasurer.
Is that, okay, I, I don't, I don't have that one. I, I was looking at the old printed one, so, okay. Yep.
Yeah, as I recall with that one, there were some issues in terms of sign.
Oh, we, we lost you, John.
I think he muted.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Oh, good, thank you. I said that there, I thought there were, had been some issues in the wording that we had resolved with the Town Treasurer.
Yes, that we went back and forth with the Town. Um, for this particular policy, the main changes is the Declaration of Trust that you, except for Bob, because he wasn't on the Board at that time, back in September 19th of 2019, it got signed. It's been signed. It's gone back through the Town. You guys all signed it again and we sent it up and they will be submitting into PRIX, which is, um, why we had to, uh, recertify, uh, for, for the OPEB. So before we take a vote on this, um, I wanted to add that date of September 19th, 2019 in the first paragraph. That would be the only additional change to this.
Okay, so do we add that, uh, change or Kathleen, can you add that change into the motion, please?
Yeah, um, um, move to add the date as recommended.
Could I have a second, please?
A second.
Matter of fact, I'll even accept it as the main motion if that's okay. Let's just send any objection. I can accept it as part of the main motion.
What, yes, great.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, roll call vote, please. Mr. Stempak, aye?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Can I say who, um, seconded that?
Me. Dave.
Mr. Hennessy.
Dave, Dave Hennessy.
Oh, there's two Daves, I forgot.
Uh, let's see, um, policy 12?
Policy.
Go ahead, just, just go ahead, Phil.
Move the Policy 12, Redding Municipal Light Board Documents Dissemination be scheduled for the next periodic review without change.
Second.
Discussion? It's in discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Stempak, aye?
Hennessy, aye.
Coulter, aye.
There's, uh, no recommended changes in, uh, in Policy 12. So this is just a 3/24, um, next review date.
Mr. Talbot?
Sorry, what's the question?
Oh, we're taking a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I said I already.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Uh, Policy 19, Board of Commissioners?
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve Policy 19, Board of Commissioners have presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, is, so there's no change, just a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Is there, is there any change to this policy?
No, no recommended change.
Okay, so I guess the only thing, whether tonight or at a future date, to clarify is, you know, we did have some discussions in recent meetings that it does say, we, you know, we approve, uh, power supply contracts. I know there was some discussion that maybe that's not always the case. Feels like that needs clarification because it's pretty clear in black and white that it says we do, we do approve large power supply contracts and, and it would be logical for, that that would be something we would do for very, very large, you know, contractual decisions. So is that anything that needs clarification?
I think it's in there.
I mean, it is, correct.
Oh, yeah, sure, right, power contracts and agreements and their resource mix. Yes, after the 30-day period.
After the, after the CAB looks at it. So then, I mean, not to go back over this whole thing, but this is, this is, this was the, one of the issues was why, why didn't this happen with the biomass thing? And then there was some discussion, well, there's another mechanism by which the GM can do this without notwithstanding that sentence you just read. So that's, that seems like that needs to be clarified. Like, are we, I, I presume, and I think we've kind of come to a consensus that it's clear that we do want to know about and, uh, uh, approve or otherwise, you know, something of the magnitude of 90 or 150 million dollars and not, you know, not know about it. So I'm just wondering if there's anything to be clarified in that policy.
Well, the policy as stated, uh, doesn't differentiate between 10% or 30% or 40%. Um, you know, I certainly don't have any issue if you, if, or we wanted to put in, below a certain level, uh, you know, the General Manager, you know, has the freedom to do the right thing in terms of, uh, capturing these kinds of elements because there's a, there's always a question of time in some of these in terms of people to get on board with them.
Correct, and, and I know that we've approved and that if there is timely and it's sort of best practice that you don't want to wait weeks to have a meeting through something that's the transient opportunity, but when it's a long-term 20-year contract for a plant that's not built for three more years, it's, it doesn't fit in that category. So, anyway, I just, this is.
I, I think it's stated, Dave, uh, that we'll just have to do it moving forward. I mean, it's, it's in black and white. We could bold it. Uh, I think we could.
Okay, uh, I'm only asking because you, you have made the point that it, it didn't apply in that, in that case a few months ago. So that's all. We don't have to go over it again tonight. Nothing changed in this policy, so we don't have to go over it. I guess the clarification is, you know, what was this other mechanism that supposedly allowed a unilateral decision without Board input? What was that mechanism and is that, is that something else that we need to change or revisit? In some other policy, because that was always confusing to me. What, what other mechanism was that superseded this?
Sure, Mr. Coulter?
I, I, to, to Dave's, furthering Dave's point, it does say 30-day period. I think we need to adjust that because 30 days, there's no, you can't make a financial, any type of financial decision with the 30-day period in there. And, and, but for a long-term contract, that's one thing, but uh, I, I think, um, after allowing it, you know, maybe the language needs to be modified a little bit there. But I think in Policy 30, I think Colleen was introducing that she was going to bring forward all contracts now in front of the Board, but we, to, again, to Dave's point, we were talking about, you know, is there a certain percentage or, or dollar value that we, we shouldn't even engage with? So I, I thought, Colleen, you were going to try to, and Greg and, and Chuck, you were going to try to work on a figure that would be something that we, you know, above, above a line and below the line that you would engage us in, so.
Actually, what I said was that I would take them all, every one of them, except for TFA, because I have a vote already for, for, uh, layering and laddering small transactions through the TFA. So we'll, we'll just bring everything through.
I think that's the wise choice. We'll just bring everything through. And take a look at it just as it states in the policy and, um, and try to live up to the policy. I think that's appropriate.
If, if it doesn't work, then, I'm sorry, we, if, if it doesn't work, we modify it again, right?
I mean, it might mean, it might mean for longer Board meetings for future Commissioners and, you know, I'm not really worried about that, so I think, uh,
Mr. Lameback.
There you go.
What do you mean, they're not going to watch us on TV?
That said, do I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Okay, excellent. Um, power supply update. Chuck, please?
I. I'm sorry, did we, did we finish all of the?
I, I thought we did.
Yeah, there was, uh, just the five of them, Colleen.
Okay.
Right, five of them, right. That's correct.
Yep, okay.
But if there are others, well, you can.
No, there wasn't. I, I miscounted.
Okay. Mr. Underhill?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
You see that?
Yes.
There we go. Um, the first slide up tonight is, uh, a revisit of 2020. I have the 2019 actuals, the 2020 actuals and what we use for a load forecast for our power supply budget, uh, for 2020. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, revisit, uh, quickly that in 2020, we finished about a half a percent, six tenths of a percent above 2019's results. We're about 3% below, uh, the result, the, uh, forecast for 2020 that. Were about three percent below the result, the forecast for two thousand twenty that ENE prepared. And if you look at the first four or five months of the year, you'll see that that's where a lot of the load difference occurs. We were thinking about a year ago that up to an eight percent reduction in our retail sales as a result of the impact of COVID and the isolation protocols that have been put in place. In fact, we did not see that. The differences are primarily due to weather related effects. Our industrial customers kept their production going. Residential loads were up a little bit. Some of the commercial traffic was down a little bit, but through it all, we remained fairly stable. So I just wanted to sort of bring that back around as a, as a quick review. Next slide, please. So we're starting the year off, and for the first month of the year, we actually came in below our budgeted amount. Part of that is that the sales were down, our load was down in January due to slightly warmer temperatures. This is even though we used the load forecast, the loads from two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty to forecast our peak or our monthly load factors. So loads were still down a little bit. Costs were still down rather dramatically. We were seeing regular on peak costs of about twenty to twenty-five dollars a megawatt hour for the first couple of weeks in January. So energy costs were dramatically down, and you can see that that's where a big piece of the savings component occurred. Next slide, please. Capacity cost came in pretty much as budgeted. Slight difference, we can go back and look, they were slightly above what was projected. But on the other side of that, next slide, please. Transmission costs were down by almost an offsetting amount. So capacity and transmission are rolled into the same price grouping on the customer bill, and that charge, the the cost impact on that was essentially flat for the month of January. Next slide, please. So this is basically showing what our portfolio looked like for the month of January, and it is pretty much what was expected. You can see that the top of the yellow bar is slightly below the forecasted kilowatt hour sales, which are the black line. So slightly down in loads, slightly down in energy prices. That's where the January difference occurred. And you can see what we had in our resource portfolio for the month of January. And I think that's it. Do I have one more, Kathleen? That's it.
Thank you very much, Chuck.
Any questions?
No.
No questions? Okay. Let's move on to greenhouse gas emissions, standard policy thirty update.
Hey, good evening, Kathleen. I'll let you drive. I'll go right to the agenda slide. So as she brings that up, we're going to talk about two main categories. One is just a kind of an update in terms of policy thirty that you guys approved last month, some details behind what's happened since then and what we're doing going forward. And then the second big bucket is the hydro opportunity that we want to review with you as well. Go ahead, next slide. So legislative legislative update and the certificate management of the two type of topics in the first category, policy thirty update. And then we'll shift gears to talk about the power, the power portfolio, that hydro project in a few moments. Go ahead, next slide, please. So quick legislative update. You guys might have heard this already, but on Monday of this week, March fifteenth, the roadmap twenty fifty or the climate bill S nine, the greenhouse gas emissions standard bill, that was basically approved by the Senate and relatively unchanged from the past several months. So remember that 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 legislation has three main components, one being energy, two being housing, the third one being transportation, and most of the discussion back and forth of the various cycles over the past couple of months, excuse me, has been relative to the housing. The energies remained unchanged. This afternoon, March eighteenth, this afternoon, the House also approved it. The vote was one forty-five to thirteen, so pretty overwhelming. And as it's noted here, right, the next step is for it to go back to the governor. If the governor happens to reject it, it probably still will go through. The Senate and House both both will probably override. So either way, while that slide comes back, either way, this legislation that we've been basically anticipating and preparing for this climate legislation bill will become law soon. So the next mid-April, end of April timeframe. That's perfect, this slide. So the implication, it's okay. Back one here, you're fine, Kathleen. Back one more.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's good. The other way. So the next, the next topic, so moving from the back to there, perfect. So in terms of certificate management, remember, under the the original policy thirty, the rev one, which was in effect until last month, the majority of the certificates were sold. There was a collection of effects that were have been continuously retired. In the next, in the slide in just a moment, don't change yet. I'm going to talk a little about the sequence in terms of some of the details that we need to manage around a little more carefully going forward. But under the new policy thirty, the rev one policy thirty, some of the things included in that were more attentive detail and diligence relative to managing the certificates, because now we need to do compliance both from a regulatory perspective as well as our internal policy thirty. So in effect, starting in the second quarter, starting in April next month, we are going to be transitioning to be retiring certificates up to that annualized line. And that, we'll, we'll start doing regular updates on this, but just to give an idea of where we're going and what we're doing, is we're going to be retiring certificates up to that gold line, which we used to call the roadmap twenty fifty line on the annualized basis. Remember that last month, we basically decided to put language in in our policy thirty rev one to have us meet do our best due diligence to strive to meet an annualized line. So that's what we're going to do going forward. In that mode of operation, since we're going to be retiring a larger and larger portfolio, a portion of our portfolio each month, each quarter, I'll get to the timing in a second, we're going to retire the least valuable ones first. So, for example, effects and main class one recs will be the ones we retire first. Those that are above the the certificates after we've done those required retirements, the rest of them, we will plan on selling. And part of that, again, is just to to buffer the the financial impact going forward. I'll talk a little bit more about the schedule here in just a second in terms of why we are trying to avoid expiration. At the end of the day, you'll see in just a moment that there's a shelf lifetime tied to these. And historically, it wasn't a big issue, because we were selling what we could and retiring the rest. And now we're going to do it a little bit more disciplined fashion. What we are going to do internally is monitor and manage these certificates on a monthly basis. We're going to report them out quarterly to you. There will be monthly updates, but the bigger changes you'll see in a moment will happen each quarter. And then, of course, from a compliance perspective, we'll always, we'll start doing our annual filing. So we're thinking about it in terms of monthly management, quarterly reporting and annual filings. Next slide, please. So just to, just to understand some of the context here, I'll just move through this kind of quickly. But these certificates, and whether they're effects or mass class one or anything in between, basically, the way they're configured is that one certificate is issued or created, and one certificate is created for each megawatt of energy produced by a generator. It, the important thing to note that while they are generated or created at the time that the energy is generated, they can't be transacted. They're not minted. They're not minted until approximately six months later. So if you look at the, those two bars, horizontal bars across the top, the green bar is basically what gets gets generated each quarter. So first, again, on a calendar year, so first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, you can see that. But they're not minted. That's the blue bar going across underneath. They're not minted until roughly six months later. And more importantly, we can't transact them. And when I say transact them, the two main things that we can do with them is either retire them or sell them. And so for what's created in the first quarter of each year, we have the window basically between July, there's two months between July and September when we can transact those, and the same thing for the second quarter, October, December, and et cetera. So there's a, there's a lag. We can choose to, what we'll call bank, or or not transact certificates between these, these four blocks of windows to transact between those blue bars across the bottom. But the important thing to realize, there is a shelf life, as I mentioned earlier, and so if we have not transacted them by June fifteenth of the following year, they will be forfeited. So it is important for us to make sure that we manage them on a consistent basis and either retire as requirement or sell as requirement. Those are, those are just some key pieces. So just kind of thinking about how we're going to manage this, what we envision producing on a quarterly basis for you is a chart that basically it'll be probably the fourth chart behind the the power supply chart that Chuck just went through. There'll be one called certificates. And what we'll probably create for you is the various certificates on the left hand column. And then across the top, we'll have opening balance, retirements, sales, closing balance. And so we'll do that on a quarterly basis. Our policy thirty that we that we approved indicates that we need to keep you guys updated on a monthly basis, and we will do, but just realize the major changes will happen on a quarterly basis tied to those blue bars across the bottom. So so big picture that the takeaway is for us, for you guys to be thinking about, we are going to be actively managing our horizon, but we're going to be managing this stuff monthly. And we'll be taking into account the value of the certificates, any balancing compliant, any compliance issues that we have to do, and also looking at the shelf lives. Our goal from that previous slide, I don't have to go back to it, but we're going to to retire up to the compliance requirement line tied to our policy thirty, and then we're going to sell the rest. And we're going to retire the least valuable ones first and and work up the the value chain. So that's kind of a quick summary of what we're going to be doing for certificate management going forward under the new policy thirty. Questions? All right, we're gonna, we're good.
Sorry, Greg. It's, sorry, John. Quick question. It somewhat related to policy thirty.
Yes.
When, when we have a solar customer, right, are we approaching the solar customers in Reading to buy their certificates? It might be smaller. We, is it that that small of a of a production, are we not interested? But if we look at the, you know, the totality of it, it might be an opportunity.
It, it's relatively small right now, and we, those certificates tend not to pass through our portfolio at this point in time, because they're actually not owned by us. So so for the short term time, we're not including those in any sort of compliance management. And then there are other ones that we look at relative to some of our community solar, where we have opportunities to actually participate or take a ownership role in the, in those recs. Right now, it's mainly, it's mainly the other resources.
Yeah, if I could add a little bit to that, under the program that we are participating with DOER for incentives to small scale programs, part of that requires that the recs be turned over to the participating municipal light plant and that they be retired. So for any projects that we have done under the DOER, Aegis, we have been acquiring the recs and we have been retiring the recs. And going forward, once the DOER expires, our program will be changed so that if we pay an incentive to a customer for a solar installation behind the meter, they will turn over the recs to us and we will retire them.
Oh, that's interesting.
That, yeah, that's good. And assuming that will, if this battery, same program with the battery program or?
Yeah, the batteries don't have certificates right now, Bob, but they will impact the, the way the solar plays out. Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick follow up, because I have a four point six five kilowatt system now on my roof. So that means, I'm glad to hear that our building gets the recs, what that little tiny bit of a rec and retired it from my roof. Because you're giving me.
If you're under the DOER, if you took a DOER incentive, yes, the recs come to us and we retire them. That's part of the DOER program.
That's good.
Yep. Also, a quick technical question is, somebody texted me saying that YouTube is garbled on on me. So I don't know what that is, if there's any technical issue on that end.
On, on just you, Dave?
I guess so, yeah. Somebody just texted me saying that I'm garbled or doubled or something. I don't know if.
Well, I don't know. It's, it's a very rainy, stormy night out. Hard to believe that would impact it, but.
I'm, I'm in, in the interest of time, I'm going to continue. I'm going to shift gears and move to the.
Please do, Greg.
So Kathleen, next slide, if we could. So this is the the context. Again, it's a little bit related, obviously, to policy thirty, because what we're trying to do on an ongoing basis, as we talk on a regular basis, is keep filling that open part of the portfolio. Remember, the upper right hand corner of our charts that go out, we have open positions, and we continue to need to fill those in as contracts expire, et cetera. So we've been having some discussions with a company called Gravity Renewables. Just so you know a little bit about Gravity, and we have three existing projects with them, a little smaller scale than this one we have right here. Gravity is, they focus only on hydro projects. They've got seventeen projects that they either own and or manage, and plus another dozen projects. These are primarily east of the Mississippi, but they all do hydro products, projects. So they are, they are hydro focused, and they're very experienced in this space. So we've got experience with them. So we, we work very well with them. They have an opportunity for us, and the reason why we are kind of transitioning from an update to asking for a motion on tonight's discussion is in the context of the legislation that's passing, there's a lot more interest by all of the energy retailers to look at renewable and noncarbon projects going forward. So there's a, there's increasing pressure for us to act and move. On a related note, this, I'll give you through some background, but this project will they'll be able to start delivering power from this project in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, which is only a couple of months away. So a little bit of context, why we're transitioning earlier today from an update to, we'd like a decision on it. So I want to be able to answer the questions you guys might have. This particular project, the output of it, it's a, it's an existing dam that was actually started back in eighteen seventy as a mechanical dam. In the early nineteenth century, it transitioned to electric generation. So there's a lot of history behind this particular project. There's a lot of history in terms of what the the flows associated with this one. It's not a pumped hydro. It's a, it's a river based system in Connecticut. It went through major relicensing back in the early nineteen eighties. And as you guys probably know, hydro projects undergo extensive regulatory scrutiny from environmental related issues, all sorts of issues. So they're pretty extensively reviewed as part of being relicensed. So the last relicensing was done in the early nineteen eighties. This particular project has been family owned for for many, many, many decades, and Gravity Renewables is in the process of acquiring this asset as well. And it is in the process of refurbishing to bring it up to more reliable standards. It is about three point eight percent of our load, should we actually contract with them, which we are recommending that we do. It's about twenty-five thousand megawatt hours per year. On this particular term, again, because of the nature of this being a noncarbon renewable, we like the idea of bringing this in on a longer term contract, in this case, twenty-five years, which fits very nicely into hydro projects that we have already. This particular case continues, just like almost all of the other projects that, well, all the projects that we currently have, we like the concept of associated recs. There's a lot of benefits for doing that. One is just administrative efficiency. And this particular case, remember, I mentioned that this is undergoing FERC relicensing, and that relicensing is expected to be done by two thousand twenty-six. At that point in time, the anticipation and the way we are structuring the contract, that those would be Connecticut class one certificates. Because there's some uncertainties, you get further out. So between years fifteen and twenty-five years into the project, we've basically provided an option for those certificates at a fixed price. So if the, if the market somehow softens, which is highly unlikely, we're not committing. So if the, if the market somehow softens, which is highly unlikely, we're not committing ourselves that far out to the certificates. But if the, if they maintain the value, which we expect them to do, then we we have a fixed price tied to those. So again, we're, we're trying to think carefully and think down the road with these long term contracts in terms of how the recs are associated managed. Between now, so starting in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty six. These will be basically the equivalent of main class one certificates. So they'll still, even in the early days, be able to be part of our compliance portfolio. And that is related also to the pricing. And so on the pricing, just to kind of put order of magnitude at this volume, this particular contract, while it's twenty five years out, it is. It's a very. The rate is actually defined in the contract. It is less than, it's noticeably less than two million dollars a year, just to give you guys an idea of order of magnitude. So it's not big, about three point eight percent of our portfolio. It is renewable and then non carbon, and it's an existing asset that's in the middle of basically relicensing, et cetera. So if as we look at it, it is, it fits our portfolio. It pits our, it fits our policy thirty requirements. It's with a company that we've, we trust and have a good track record with. With so from both a financial perspective, a compliance perspective, an environmental perspective and a risk management perspective. Our, our recommendation is that we actually move forward with the contract for these guys. So that's, that's kind of a big picture overview. I've covered a lot in a very short period of time. Questions?
I might just mention that the cab in the previous session approved this as well. So in terms of cycling back through the cab. I think the second thing is that as far as anyone knows, there's no community pushback on anything environmental, et cetera. As a matter of fact, they're putting in a supposedly putting in a fish ladder, I think they call it.
Yep, that's correct, yes. That's the only environmental related update from what's already there. And again, the fact this place has been there for a long time is speaks to the stability of all the environmental factors.
Can you say which river it is, Greg?
So it's still, they're trying to close off, so they asked us not to.
Okay, I figured that's why you didn't mention it, yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that picture in the upper left hand corner is not the actual facility. It's just, it's a, it's representative. And the reason I wanted to have a picture, when we think of of small scale hydro, we're not talking about Hoover Dam, you know? We're not talking about Bonneville Dam, this is smaller scale. But in reality, this is a, this is a nice sized, small hydro system. So it's, it's, what we're trying to do is kind of bring our, our average contract size up a little bit. So that from a management perspective, we're very efficient and we're not managing a whole bunch of micro pieces. So that's another piece why this is a good size for us.
Greg, I think you also mentioned that from a flow perspective, there are dams ahead of this. To try to maintain a constant flow.
It's a little more steady, yes, that's correct, John, right.
And John, that brings up another point. The upstream dams do have an impact on how the volume of flow times through the turbines of the downstream. And usually there is a negotiation with an upstream provider to see if they can balance their timing a little bit. So that all of the units on that particular river are optimized to the extent possible. In terms of offsets to energy price and meeting load obligation. So that's been factored in. We have about five years worth, I think, of historic hourly load data that we've been able to take a look at. So that we can match and marry those impacts of their production against our load profile.
Thank you. Yep, John, I, I, no question, are there any river bladders involved at this or 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 potential?
We are, we are not aware of any, this is run of the river.
Okay.
Bladder project that I'm aware of is up in the village of Swanton.
So what we're, again, from the email traffic earlier, what we're asking the commission to do tonight is to make an actual motion to allow us to continue to move forward with this project. So that's, that's why that email came out earlier this evening.
Phil, do you have the motion in front of you?
Did Phil drop off?
Yeah, Mr. Pacheco. Phil? I don't see him. Oh, there he is, yeah. Did you receive the email, Phil? You're on. You're on mute, Phil. Phil, Phil, you're on mute, you're on mute, mute.
Very good. I got my first COVID shot today, so I'm a little bit woozy.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Move of the board of commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute a contract with Gravity Renewables for energy, including associated certificates from a hydro facility in Connecticut.
Second, oh, is that it?
Do you have any discussion?
Just one question.
Go ahead, yes.
Is it, is it a fixed price? Or how does the pricing change over the, over the life of the contract? And is that, is whatever that is typical for a hydro project?
Yeah, so, so Commissioner Talbot, that's a good question. So the, the actual rate is fixed, it changes over time. So it's very predictable. In terms of the number, it is just on the lower end of our average of our hydro projects. And then just for reference, right, relative to the total portfolio, our hydro projects tend to be about eighty percent higher than the total portfolio. And that's basically the, to reflect the value of being non carbon and renewable. And again, part of the reason why I want to move forward on this particular one, there are not a lot of these projects available. And there's a lot more interest that's come up over the past month or so. So we're trying to move quickly and also that they're ready to start producing as well.
And there's no, like, anything we don't know about, like a controversy over this?
This, yeah, excellent question. And this particular one, not a lot of controversy, only because the, the asset has been in place for literally decades. And the history, the history there, it's not, yeah, it's, it's different than no controversy that we know of.
Yep, well, thank you for moving quickly on it.
Magic opera, sorry, does anyone have a question?
I, I was going to add, this is a family owned hydro project, which is one of the reasons that we don't get. More background information, but it's been placed for a hundred and fifty years. And when we were looking at the pricing, we've asked for multiple scenarios so that we can match the price to the availability of aspects of the project like recs. So there is in the first two years, a lower front end cost because there will not be the recs with the associated value of a class one. Once the FERC licensing is in place and they have a class one rating. We will be paying a class one price for it. And the ability in the latter part of the contract to go back and revisit what the recs pricing is. As a fairness and equity issue to both sides. Because we're expecting the recs market to remain constant over the twenty five year period.
Thank you, Chuck. I'd like to call for a real call vote on this, please. Mr. Steph.
Alba Dai.
Mr. Caldera.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the engineering and operations report? Need?
Yes, sir, I. Good evening, thank you so much for the opportunity to present the study that was done in two thousand twenty called the, the study called the Solar and B S Capacity Study. To find out the limitations on the system and the feeders in order to make sure they're not exceeding those limitations. The, in the interest of time, I'm going to move quickly on these. So the first slide is going to show you the reliability indices. Again, as you could see in the far upper right bar. You see that in every chart that we're well below the regional and national averages, the reliability is great, we continue to do great. The next slide is showing basically the causes, the origins, the average five years to month for the month of February. And the only area that we exceeded is as you could see, the weather incidents and this number of storms. Everything else is well below the average of five years. The study, solar battery study, it includes the G I S map. We're talking about the G I S map of the solar installations, the solar installation system impact study. What were the goals and deliverables of the study? What are the, what are the concerns and the study results, as well as the remediation plans? When you reach the system limitations? And also the R M L D operating procedure when it comes to applying for the solar or battery storage that the people they want to install. This shows basically the solar installation G I S map that we're tracking. Everybody who's requesting interconnection with the R M L D system. If we put them on the map, we monitor these, as you could see, we approximately have in our service territory about ninety installations and they keep building up. So for this result, for this reason, because we saw so many, you know, they, we expect increasing solar installations and battery storages. So that's why we did a study to find out what are the limitations on overall systems and also the feeders. So the goals were, like what I said, to find out what are the operating limits. So it won't impact the reliability and the safety. We wanted to calculate the maximum capacity that, you know, we can offer to the customers for interconnection. At every node, we wanted to integrate that data into our G I S mapping for better tracking. And, you know, having a better control over the capacity limit. Those, the system deliverables were, after we did the engineering analysis, it was the region report and the data file that contained the G I S data that it would be up to date. We did it in two parts. Basically, we did the system modeling internally in order to, you know, to minimize the cost of the study. These type of studies generally cost anywhere between fifty to hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, we did under twenty thousand dollars because we did the preliminary study and preliminary system analysis as well as the system modeling that was done internally by engineers. And then we gave that to the engineering firm that they have more advanced softwares in order to be able to do that detailed analysis. So we can, you know, use that and share the data. So what are these studies? What, what, what were the factors of your, the, the, what are the factors that, you know, included in study? I'm not going to go over all of these, but you see on the left, these are the parameters that, you know, basically were included into the study. And they were examined to make sure we stay within the limits. What are the concerns? The concerns that we had was over voltage during the light load conditions. The reverse power flow where, you know, back to the R M L D feeders. When the system is reaching the maximum limit or its capacity, how to handle that? The harmonic distortions, which is impacting the power qualities and as well as the voltage transients or disturbance. Anytime they invert, they're kicking these units in. So you see that the study was done and they gave us the results and what they produced. They produced the heat index map that you see in the upper left corner. So at every color, they designate, I know, what is the limit? What is the maximum capacity at every section of the feeder? And overall, the overall system, they gave us the G I S map with every feeder looked like this heat index to give us the limitations at every point in our system. That indicates the available capacity. And it's big, this system is being updated every six months. It costs us minimum, you know, engineering money, basically to just transfer the data to the engineering firm P S E. And they're going to update it and they're going to give us in the G I S format, so our system is updated up to date. So it's going to be located on the R M L D sharepoint, so engineers, everybody internally, they have access to that. So they know at every given point and every given time, what are the limitations? And the engineering report will include the heat index map to show everybody that, you know, where are we with that, the latest and greatest. This is showing that the, some of the study results, basically, on the left, you see the node at every point in the system. The network ID, which feeder it belongs to, and what is the maximum K W that could go at every given point? And the rest of these are basically the system parameters that were set in order to be, make sure that we are not exceeding the, the limits. Now, what are the limits? The limits are basically the amount of current that you can send back on the feeders, on the piece of wire or maybe the fuse or upstream protective devices. So every one of those pieces or equipments, they have limitations. Yeah, so you don't want to burn the wires, you don't want the over current protective devices to operate unintentionally. So for those reasons, we did this study just to make sure we have everything under control and we're not exceeding those limits. So the system limitations, the capacity limitations, basically, are the shared responsibility, cooperation, collaboration between R M L D and customers. The customers, they shall include in the design, whoever who's going to be the design system and installer. We strongly recommend them to go to the smart inverters that they can control the power flow, reverse power flow and also regulate the voltage. This is, this technology is kind of new. What they do, the more and more companies, they're offering these advanced features that they invert. They could be programmed by either by the customer or the technicians or they could be also controlled where the customers that choose to buy the utility. So in order to participate into the D R, in the demand response. D R program that is offered, is going to be offered in the future by I R D. So overall, the intent is to protect the system. And also in the interest of the reliability and safety, make sure we are not exceeding the system limitations. So the question becomes, what if a feeder has reached its maximum capacity? Well, basically, R M L D cannot take it. What the people, they're going to be doing, once they receive the request and engineering analysis is done, we're going to give report to the customer service, which is, we're going to be contacted, the customers are going to be contacted. And they're going to be told that, you know, well, this is, the system has reached its maximum limit. So you're going to have to set your smart inver basically to zero out flow. So we can take that. Now, at that point, what are the options? What the customers, they're going to do? Well, there are two things that the customers, they could do. They could install batteries, like, you know, Tesla, to store the energy during the day and use it at night. Or they could participate in the peak shaving or demand response program that is going to be offered by our R M L D in the future programs. We continually, continuously following the industry best practices to offer these programs incentives. And, you know, and one of these things is going to be participation into the demand response program being offered. We, our SCADA system is fully capable of handling those type of actions or those type of operating processes and procedures. So in order to do that, again, the customers, the customers are totally in control of that. You know, if you choose not to participate, you just don't. If you do, then, you know, we can control the generation as the system needs through the SCADA system and bring the generators on off when the system needs it without exceeding the limitations and causing system trouble for the rest of the customers. Business processes, what is the process? The customer should contact the, the U R M L D customer service. Once they contact by the phone or the email or letter, the customer service is going to issue a U A N number for the customers. The customers, they're going to be, once the customer service is receiving, is issuing the U A N that they're going to pass the work order to I R D and Engineering Operational Assistance and also Assistant Director of Engineering, John McDonough. And John is going to assign an engineer to that to perform engineering analysis. During that process, if the interconnection goes over hundred fifty K W. We require the more detailed system impact study that's going to have to be farmed out by, by, because they, they, the firms outside, outside firms. They have more, some more sophisticated system and software in order to do those analysis than us. So that's going to be farmed out. If it's going to be less than hundred fifty K W internally, we're going to do the analysis and we're going to tell the customers that by the report. And also the G I S map, that's going to tell them what are the system limitations and restrictions. Once that report goes to I R D and the customer service, the customer service is going to contact the customer, how to proceed with the installations. And then the customers, they're going to go ahead and hire installer. Once they install the system and, you know, the contractor is going to install it. Obviously, they're going to have to go through the respective town, the wire inspectors in order to get a permit. And the one inspector, after inspection, they're going to call R M L D's control center and they're going to say that, you know, okay. The customer is also to be energized and that way, you know, we're going to install the meter for their generational, generation system. And then once we energize that, then we're going to update the G I S system. So that's our process and procedure. This basically is the flow chart of that system that tells, you know, the, everybody and all the engineers and control authorities and the supervisors, they're all trained as well as the IRD and the customer services, that this is the process flow that they're going to have to do from the time that the report, the time that the customer is making the call to the IRD coming to engineering, engineering operations, making the determinations whether you know, it's going to have to be farmed out because it's over hundred fifty or less than hundred fifty. And then the report goes back to the customer service and IRD. They contact the customer, the customer is going to install it and then the one inspector is going to inspect the service. If they give okay, that goes back to the engineer that this is good to go and the engineer is going to issue the work order for the grid assets and communications group in order to energize the meter. At the same time, the engineer is going to be notifying the IRD for any applicable rebates, rebates that are available. And IRD is going to send that completion to or the rebate to the business finance group when this group and they're going to issue their rebate. And that's it. And then at that point, the work order is completed and engineering is going to update the GIS map right over here and the process is complete. So everybody is trained for this process and procedure. So what are the important things to remember here? This is the shared responsibility between the customer and RMLD. So it's a cooperation, collaboration between us and the customers. What the customers, they should do, they should, as soon as they, you know, they decide to install a generator the batteries or the solar, they need to contact RMLD immediately. So we can start that the system capacity analysis and give them the report. So do not make any economic investment, doesn't matter whether it's residential or, you know, commercial, industrial. So please contact RMLD so we can tell you what the system limitations are and what you can do and what are the options. We're there for you to assist you on that and we're working with you. So what are the RMLD responsibilities? Making sure that we're utilizing the system capacity to the best we can. Along with those, if we can open up the capacity by making improvements like increasing the wire size or, you know, upgrading the protection system like fuels and reclosers and relays at the station. Whatever we can do without going through major expense that it's going to cost the rate bears lots and lots of money. You know, we will do whatever we can within reasonable means in order to, you know, make sure the maximum capacity is being utilized. The same, same thing, also we, our other responsibility is to maintain the reliability system. And also giving, making sure the quality, the power is at its best. So we are continuously monitoring the best business practices, make sure we follow that trend. And the last thing is updating the DG capacity limitations by, you know, updating the GIS and making sure everybody is aware of that and we're not exceeding those limits and we, this is a transparent process. So we will more than happy to sit down with the customer contractors or the customers to explain to them and show them exactly what the limitations are and why. So again, we're there to help you out to make sure the interconnection is done to the best satisfaction of the customer and RMLD's system limitations. So the last slide, basically, we have this, as you know, this service manual handbook was completed in two thousand twenty. And the RMLD website on the second row on the first icon. You're going to see that, you know, on the right, you're going to see that service manual requirements. So for updates on the requirements and restrictions, everything, it's a section thirteen on page forty-four. Which is the customer title that has customer own generation requirements. We strongly recommend you before you're making any investments, please contact us so we can, you know, we can give you advice and you tell you what the options are. And then that way, you know, won't be disappointed if you're going to tell you that, you know, well, you cannot generate anything back to our system. And you're going to have to set your invera to zero out. So, so that concludes my report. Thank you so much for the opportunity. If there is any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions.
Thank you very much, Ameed. Clearly a service that's needed and one that I think could be of real benefit to our customers.
Yes, absolutely.
There's no questions, can we move on to the financial report, Wendy?
Good evening.
Hello.
There you go, Ameed.
Sorry.
I'm sharing. Okay, so. Okay. So I just want to, as Colleen mentioned, I just want to go over the audit schedule. So typically it takes about six weeks to turn around the audit from the time that the auditors are in-house and this year they will be, hopefully. If nothing changes in the next two weeks, they will be onsite. The first full week of April to perform the audit. And about six weeks turnaround to finalize, get some letters back from legal. And I would love to, you know, have the audit presented to the audit committee in May. I think that's best case scenario, worst case would be June. So as you know, it gets presented to the audit committee first. And then the audit committee makes a recommendation to the board of commissioners at that time. And then the board of commissioners accepts the audit. And after the board of commissioners accepts the audit, the, the final financial statements, then it can be released to the public. So that goes in line with Colleen's report to the select board and the towns. So tonight, I'm just going to give you an unaudited draft of the financials as they look from my perspective before the, any kind of pension and OPEB adjustments get made. So as I have been focusing all, pretty much all year due to COVID is our ongoing relationship, I would say, with our customers, trying to, you know, give them some leeway and extend any type of services that we can in order to help them, in order to help ourselves at the same time. So as you can see, we kind of dipped here in June, which was kind of the height of when everything, you know, people were having the effects of COVID. And then we stayed over here and then we dipped again in October. And now we're right back where we want to be, pretty much ninety-six and a half percent. Ninety days current, the reason is because, you know, we do not impose any finance, any finance charges or any penalties for late payments. Oftentimes, these utility bills get missed, they need reminders. So ninety days is really a good judge. So basically ninety-six and a half percent of cash is in the bank. That's what this says. Then I wanted to give you a look of the depreciation reserve as compared to capital spending. So on a positive note, I want to make, make it clear that our capital improvements for the safety and reliability of our infrastructure. So depreciation reserve is the only reserve that absolutely has to be held for capital projects. So I just wanted to highlight the fact that the RMLD's mission here is to continue to provide to our customers a safe and reliable system. And you can tell that by the capital spending that we continue to add. So we came in about seven point three million in CY twenty. So it's below the budget that we had intended, but due to our restrictions and COVID impact, that's where we ended. And then operations and maintenance expenses. So you can see on the left column here, the actual expenses through twelve thirty-one and then the budgeted expenses were about one point one million dollars under budget. And the majority of that is due to COVID. So I can give you the highlights here. I've gone through the highlights a couple of times and now that we've put everything in the right months, at the end of the year, everything is in twenty twenty that belongs in twenty twenty. We did struggle with that due to a lot of vendors. Their corporations or their companies, you know, not working from home, not working. So we're still getting some straggling invoices in, but not really material at this point. So vacancies in multiple areas due to talent pool retirees resignations causing an overall decrease. This is where our biggest decrease in our budget stands. So you can see by the FERC, as you can follow when you look at the financial statements, which positions they belong in and grid asset management, station technicians, material management, linemen and a little bit of admin staff. COVID causing a decrease in spending, particularly in these two areas, free trimming programs. They were halted or decreased because of the state mandate. And education and training programs were either canceled or diminished and some of them are not. Some of them are not as effective online as they would be in person. So, and just so you know, I'm focusing here only on the significant discrepancies. There are some other discrepancies that are immaterial from my perspective. Then there are unforeseen events causing an increase in spending. So we talked about the sick buyback payouts. So because of the new language and the union contracts that we're allowing employees to buy back sick time as they go, strict guidelines for that. But if they meet those guidelines, they are encouraged to buy back the sick time now. Because that eliminates the liability that we're trying to reduce the liability on the books. Typically, year after year, the liability increases because payroll increases. This year, you'll see the liability has decreased. So this is really a positive for the RMLD. And then we also had to spend quite a bit of money on roof repairs. You've been in the building sometimes. You've seen the roof leaks. And then we had to spend money on the security monitoring measures for the IT infrastructure due to the ransomware intrusion. So that's where the significant discrepancies are. And that really concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions from anyone?
Hi, John. Question? I know we, we just reviewed the, the sick policy and if we have a sick buyback liability, we're, we're working to, to make it better by the encouraging the employees to, to, to take the money now rather than later. Is that something we should revisit in the sick policy to potentially limit that exposure in the future? Or I'm assuming that's in the union contracts, so that would become a negotiation, but.
Just so you know, the, in the past contract, Colleen worked very hard to minimize the sick time with the negotiation. So she was able to, through negotiation, get it down to thirty days. It used to be that we have quite a lot of employees have unlimited. And you know, as people retire, we're getting out of that, but as people come in, they are limited to thirty days only. So it was, you know, it was unlimited, then it was ninety days, then it was sixty days. Now everybody's at thirty days, any new employees coming into the building. So what we're trying to do is offer people like with the unlimited, the opportunity to buy back time at the dollar salary that they make now versus adding on to this liability later. So because they have unlimited time, they have more flexibility to buy a lot more back than somebody has thirty days cap. The thirty day cap can buy one week a year, pretty much until the thirty days is over and you can never buy back again.
Right, right. Can, can, can they offer it to other employees? Their incentives, like offering it to other employees if they're sick or anything like that, that?
That's, that's, you know, in extenuating circumstances for that's visited case by case in a situation that is absolutely necessary that the, the RMLD would offer that. As a donation, it's called, it's, it's considered a donated sick time. So it's, you know what I mean? In order, if, if somebody's, I'm just going to throw it out there. Let's just say somebody has cancer, God forbid. And they cannot work and, and they've ran out of all their time. This, this happens, right? This is life. So we would extend that. I would, the general manager has the ability to extend that to the company to say, would anybody like to donate time anonymously? This is anonymous donation. Would you like to donate time for this individual? So yes, that has happened in the past. It's far and few between, thankfully.
Okay, thank you very much, Wendy. I think we've got a number of procurement requests. If perhaps we could get started, Phil, with the first one? For ice machines, maintenance or repair, HVAC?
I said, I'm here, I think I'm here somewhere. Move to recommend that bid two thousand twenty dash forty-seven for HVAC and ice machines prevented maintenance and repair services be awarded to Ambient Temperature Corporation for one hundred eighteen thousand fifty-six dollars pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty, section thirty-nine M. As the lowest responsible and also bidder on the recommendation general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Second, thank you. Discussion? Ameed, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, sir. I'm going to explain to you exactly. We only had one responsive, responsive, basically, offer to this offer. The reason for that, we sent a bid to twenty-five companies and only one responded to the, to this request, to the IFB. So the reason was some of them, they didn't have the D-CAM certifications. And some, they said that, you know, they can provide both services. And providing both services for the ice machines and also the HVAC system actually would save RMLD money. The last time that this contract went out, the same company, Ambient Temperature, bid it for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. This time around, they came in higher at hundred eighteen thousand fifty-six dollars. And the reason for that was the COVID restrictions and the CDC requirements to change the air filters to, from four times to six times a year. And the type of the filters that they requested and they were mandated to replace are called MIRV dash thirteen filters. Oh, that's due to the COVID. So that increase in the price was due to the restrictions that, you know, CDC require and increasing the replacement, you know.
Thank you very much, Ameed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I'd like to have a roll call vote. Mr. Stempac, aye?
It's called the right.
Talbot, aye?
Thank you. Phil?
Move to recommend that IFP two thousand twenty-one dash three for ABB OVR dash three fifteen KV recloses be awarded to Stewart C Irby Company for a total of one, one hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter one sixty-four, section fifty-six D on the recommendation general manager.
Second. Discussion, please?
Okay, so this one, we sent the bid to fourteen vendors and basically we got two responses back on this one on the same item. The lowest responsible responsive bidder was Stuart Irby, which came out actually about a bit short, about thousand dollars less than eleven fifty, less than the second bidder, which was Wesco. So Stuart Irby is going to get this. This is the ones that was budgeted for hundred thousand dollars for five units. And we came a little bit over hundred thousand, hundred, one thousand two hundred and fifteen. So it's one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars over the budgeted amount.
Thank you, Ameed.
You're welcome, sir.
Could I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stempac, aye? Thank you. Phil?
IFP two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen for pole mounting transformers be awarded to Wesco Distribution Inc. for a hundred twenty thousand seventy-four dollars pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter one sixty-four, section fifty-six D on the recommendation general manager.
Second. Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, these are basically, as you recall, in the budget that was approved, we put all the transformers for the system reliability and also for maintenance, everything in one bucket for both overhead and underground applications. So this is the overhead proportion. The bid was sent to eighteen vendors. And we got the response from four. We did a detailed analysis on that. And then the lowest responsible and responsive bidder was the Wesco, Wesco Distribution for a hundred twenty thousand seventy-four dollars.
Thank you. There's no more discussion. Roll call vote, please. It's just.
It's called the right.
Thank you.
Move that IFP two thousand twenty-one dash ten for pad mounted transformers be awarded to Wesco Distribution for a hundred ninety-four thousand two seventy-four pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter one sixty-four, section fifty-six D on the recommendation general manager.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, these are fourteen transformers, again, going back to underground for projects related that we use them for projects. We sent a bid to twenty-one bidders and we got the response from five, six of them. And the lowest responsible and responsive bidder was Wesco Distribution for a hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars.
Thank you. You have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Stempac, aye?
Talbot, aye?
Mr. Colter.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Scheduling for the next meeting, we've got down for Thursday, April 22nd. Is that okay with everyone, except for Mr. Hennessy?
Fine with me, John.
Okay, great. I think we need coverage at the next cab meeting as well. Because Mr. Hennessy was supposed to be there, but he found something else to do. Is anybody offering to cover?
I can cover that.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to move on to the next item, which is the review of the general manager. And so this is usually a discussion type of item. And you've received a lot of material. But Phil, could you read the motion, please?
But do we have numbers? The most I have has no numbers in it.
Oh, we had X and Y. Okay, we could, we could have the discussion first and then put those into the motion. Okay, that'd be fine. Colleen has sent out quite a bit of material. I hope all of you have had a chance to review it. This has been a particularly difficult year for everyone, as we all know. 2020 was a disaster in so many respects. But the RMLD stayed the course. And that was, in my mind, directly attributable to the leadership role that Colleen has played in the organization. So there have been a huge number of sort of items that have happened over the year, which if you walk through all of them, it's, it's pretty impressive. We've also, as you recall, changed our format for doing reviews of the general manager from a point system to a, sort of a 360 roundabout discussion with the general manager. We did the last one in July. And now we're quite late in terms of having done the next one. And this payment raise, et cetera, would be retroactive back to January 1st. So I don't know why it happens, but it seems like every year we're months behind giving anything to the general manager, which is very strange in my eyes, but it happens. And I'm certainly responsible, as we all are. But COVID kind of threw a monkey wrench into everything. Perhaps it would be helpful, Colleen, for you just to talk through the things that we talked about in the review session in terms of the key items that were, we had decided in July, if you have that in front of you.
Yes. So, yeah, as John said, I sent out goal narratives, list of accomplishments. Commissioner Hennessy and O'Rourke being HR executive professionals did a presentation on moving from a point system to quarterly check-in. We managed to do one, but as I said in my, in my letter, because of COVID, I met on a weekly basis and gave updates to the chair and sent memos out as a mechanism of staying quite transparent. And as you can see from just the meeting we just had, I think we do an outstanding job of providing a lot of detail. And we appreciate, you know, everyone keeping up with all the technicalities of all of us engineers. And we give some quite impressive updates every month. So the goals that we had discussed included the Wilmington substation, the Ash Street campus, solar battery system impact study, master cell agreement and electrification workshop. So just speaking a little bit on the Wilmington substation, I know we've, we've discussed some of that, you know, we kind of went from working with National Grid. And, you know, that was an issue on the assessment assessors map. And then we took a different course to work with Article 97 with the town and a private entity to purchase some land to do an Article 97 swap. That was quite a bit of work to try to get that, all the logistics of that down. But at the last minute, we had everything lined up. We had lobbying, we had the letter of intent, we had the legislative language. Everything was ready to go, Board of Selectmen. We had, we had some issues with the private seller who was going to make that swap. And they made some contingencies in there that did not fit into our time, our time plan, nor was it under the authority of the RMLD to grant such contingency. So we've switched gears again. We have another, we were also in parallel, looking at another couple of lots. And we're back on that. And we actually have another meeting next week and we're hoping that that's going to come to fruition. So that's kind of the update on the Wilmington substation. We worked on it pretty much around the clock for the entire year. But it's, it's just, it's very difficult with land in a particular area, load. Even the town of Wilmington put an article in the paper. We've put articles in the paper, reaching out to, hopefully someone will come forward. But we think this lot we're working on now will, will pan out. The Ash Street campus evaluation in July, we kind of put that on hold because of COVID to evaluate, not necessarily moving out of this building, but what are our options? Because as, as we had learned over the last five, six years, you know, the town of Reading was looking at economic development. And so where we stand with that now is, we did not do a study for this building, but the town has started what's called a bid committee for business development. The RMLD is part of that. I will be probably making somewhat of a presentation on that at the next meeting because we have to have some kind of a commitment to the town of Reading on that. And because this kind of had to do with my goal, I want to make sure that, that the board completely understands this bid process and how we would be involved in what, you know, what kind of commitment we would need to have monetarily and what that would mean for our customers and how that ties into even us evaluating staying in this, in this location. So we can talk about that next month, but that one was put on hold. The solar battery system impact study, Hameed did a great presentation. That's been done for a while. But again, we've been queued up. So thank you, Hameed, for that great presentation. I will reiterate that, you know, the service requirements handbook that's on the website will be updated with more information. And Hameed is spot on. Please call us before you install one so we can make sure that our system stays reliable and everyone stays safe. The master cell attachment agreement due to the FCC order, we worked extensively on that throughout the year and we completed that. We really haven't had any requests. We had a couple from AT&amp;T and then they got dropped. But we expect that, that will come, you know, as autonomous vehicles come in, more, more things will be drawn towards 5G. So we're, we're in place. The aesthetic policies, you know, I've sent out information to all of the towns, worked with the cabs. So, you know, we're, we're set when someone asks us to attach. And you've got to remember, there, there is, there's still information about the FCC actually applying to MLPs. Now, we talked about that at the beginning. But the way that I've set up this master agreement and all the technical specs is because we really want to work with each of the town to minimize double poles, to minimize more poles. So we, we have to understand that, you know, we could argue that the FCC, we could argue that these things should go on our poles. But we want to minimize poles, you know, for a lot of reasons. And we made that commitment to the towns at the beginning. So just kind of a history on that. But those master agreements are done. I sent everyone copies of them. I sent you copies of, of all the technical specifications. The electrician, electrification workshop, we talked about the heat pump coming up. Some of those in the EV workshop got queued up. We're ready for the formats. But we did run a number of videos and webinars throughout the year, virtually, that all spoke to electrification. They all went over all of our rebates and our movement to electrification. So we did do a lot. It didn't specifically state that we're talking about the EV or the heat pump, but those were queued up and the heat pump's done. EV will be April, what did I say, April 27th? So I, I think we, we had a great year for everything that we've gotten done. I, I think, as John said earlier, if you take a look at that artwork from the children, if you had a chance to look at my cover letter that will go in the front of the annual report, I think we were extremely resilient. Our system is resilient, our employees have been resilient, your GM has been resilient and you have been resilient as a board. And it's all appreciated. And thank you to all of the staff because their accomplishments and my accomplishments come together along with the board's support of our projects, our capital and expense budgets in the cab as well. I, I think, given the circumstances, I want to say it was a successful year. And I think Wendy will say that the audit will be successful as well. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Colleen. Would any of the other commissioners like to comment before I make a recommendation?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to say that, you know, based on everything, Colleen, that you and your team had to go up against during this pandemic year, I think you accomplished all of the key goals with the things that were in your control. You know, there are so many things that you can't control, like the land in Wilmington and things like that. And I know there's so many stakeholders that you have to, you know, you have union employees, non-union employees, you've got commercial, residential. There's so many people and stakeholders that have, have set demands on you. And you did it with, like you said, resiliency during a very tough year. So congratulations. And, and you do it in a male-dominated industry. And I don't think, I wanted to just say that, that I think there's challenges that you face that others wouldn't. So I think it's an impressive year.
Well, thank you. I, I think we, we did spend, we have spent a lot of time. And as I said, we have had a meeting every day at 10:00 AM since COVID started, since the end of February. And we are really good at emergency response. But I don't think anybody here was good at a pandemic. This was very new for us. And, you know, material inventory count, making sure that everyone stayed healthy and that we kept business continuity going was pretty amazing. But I, I'm not going to say that it wasn't really, really scary yet sometimes because I already have the responsibility of ensuring that everyone is safe that works here, the public is safe. But when you're thinking about, you know, your, your own family and your, your employees for viruses and people getting sick, and it's, it really is a huge responsibility. And I thank my senior management team for, for being there in every staff meeting to help us get through that. Because it is, it's a precedent that we've never had. And there's no emergency that an electric company has ever gone through that's like a pandemic. And kudos to the towns and the Board of Health and, and everyone else that, that's gone through this challenge.
Any comments from any other commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
One thing about the process, I mean, I did get all the emails yesterday, which were emails from Colleen with her achievements and, and letter, and then some salary comparisons. But none of that's in the board book, right? I don't, I don't think so. So it's, shouldn't that material be in the board book? I mean, this is a matter of process and openness and all that.
Well, I think we can, I don't think there's any issue with including it in, whether we do the posting, Dave.
Yeah, okay.
We could certainly post it. That's not an issue.
Yeah, the goal narrative, none of that, I mean, we, we can put it all in the board book, but we'll, we will not be putting in the board book like memes, salary, survey, things that are not shared.
No, right, understood.
Right. But most of the stuff that you're going to see shows up in the annual report anyways, but sure.
I'm just going into, going into public meeting, the documents that the board is deliberating over that are not protected by executive session, I think should be available to the public and that the mechanism is through the board book. So just kind of a point that I think we should, should have happened. It was a lot of information to get yesterday and try to process. And my, my own reaction is just on the substance of it is, I, I do thank you for your hard work and all the great engineering that's done at RMLD. I echo the comments of Dave about COVID and the excellent way it's all been handled. I do think it's worth acknowledging, we had a discussion earlier about Policy 19, which gives us a clear role and that there's not something else that says there's not a role there. I do think there was a significant decision made that ended up moving towards a reversal in the last six months. I think we all know what this is about, the biomass, not to go back over it, but I mean, it happened. And I just wonder what, what's your own assessment of that, Colleen, of your, as you look back at the decision you made and what, what's happened in the last six months? What are your own reflections on that? Because that didn't show up in any of those, those documents either. There was no discussion of it of any kind.
Well, I didn't discuss it because I figured we spent the last six months discussing it. So, and I, I didn't want to put it in there and have it be a, you know, a debate. I, I made myself perfectly clear at the beginning that I was following the policy. We had been focused on obtaining renewables on a pretty good clip in order to make the percentage goals that were in the policy. We had added a number of, of renewable projects and presented them every month. When the Palmer was purchased, it was presented in November. It was not, it was not discovered in November. It was presented. You can go back and watch the RCTV. I think we've learned a lot about environmental justice. I think that that's something that I'm very interested to see for new projects coming out, when I present them, how the board is going to handle that. Because while Greg and Chuck can discuss this gravity hydro and that it's been there for a long time, when we have new projects, it is going to be interesting. And I'm not going to be able to present and say, there is an issue, there isn't an issue. That's going to be up to the board because a lot of these projects in the future are going to be newly built. So that will be a challenge for all of us to, to, to work together to, to make that crystal ball decision. I mean, I am a proponent of biomass. I understand everyone's concerns. And when I was asked to provide options, I provided options. That would be keep, breach, or sign. And I did it quickly. So, I mean, that's my take on that. We were, we were, we had a process of purchasing renewables that were different from system energy that was being done once a year. And, yeah, I guess we, we, we took some liberties to not be following the policy down literally. And we've made that change. That's why I said a couple of meetings ago that we would bring everything to the board. That's why Policy 30 reflects that. I, I don't really have anything else to say. I mean, I said the last six months, you know, that's the training we went through. I don't, I'm not really sure what else to say.
Yeah, Colleen, I don't think you need to say anything else. It's, as Mr. Hennessy reminded me, we know when you're being evaluated that the goal post is right there and then all of a sudden someone changes the goal post to over here in the middle of the game, you know, it's very, very difficult to react. But I think we've beaten this up quite a bit. I would like to move to a recommendation for. Oh, yes, Phil, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
No, Mr. Colter is after me, maybe. I echo many of the same things that the two Daves have said. One of the things, a little bit in the distant past, but I think your handling of the, the IT situation and the way you get that straightened out and the personnel issues that went along with that, I think that that's a compliment. I, I wanted to make a point and thank you for that and for all your services, as the other two Daves have talked about.
My pleasure.
Mr. Colter?
Yeah, you know, I have a, a unique perspective of coming from the industry that we're, we're talking about. And when I see the RMLD model, I, I, I came in very neutral and blind to what, what went on. And I have been extremely impressed by, by Colleen and the staff and, and all the employees at, at Reading Light. I, I, again, it's, it, it's a, a small group, a tight-knit group. And, and I'm, I'm very, very impressed with that organization to date with what gets accomplished with the budget that you have and the personnel that you have. Been a pleasure and, and I, I, I hope it continues with, with, and, and everything keeps, keeps rolling the way it does, right? You, you guys, you guys find an obstacle, you, you get through it and, and you meet the challenges every day. And, and kudos to, to yourself and all the staff at, at Reading Light. Thank you.
Can I tag along, John?
Please go ahead.
Bob mentioned the staff. And I think, Colleen, you have hired everybody that's on this Zoom or developed them for sure. And that's kudos to you because like Bob, I'm really impressed with every function, the leader of each function that sits here in this meeting today. And that's, a lot of the credit goes to you because you brought them here and developed them.
Thank you. We're, we're building a good team. Thank you.
I'd like to suggest, if it's all right, to throw in some numbers here for the moment. throw in some numbers here for the motion. I'd like to propose a four percent salary increase and a $6,000 bonus. Open that to discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just going back to your, you had sent comparison around by email to the board noting where Reading Light stands in terms of GM salary. Do you want to just address that briefly?
Sure, I'd be happy to. There are a number of, what, what Mr. Talbot's referring to is some data produced by the meme, meme survey, which covers a number of the, all the municipals actually in terms of salary versus sort of the revenue of the municipal. And typically, the larger the organization you're in, the higher the salary just kind of goes hand in hand because there's so much more management that's assumed to be done, so much more higher level sophistication. And the way that I read the data that I had sent around to everyone was that there are a number of municipals who are significantly smaller than the RMLD, but who are paying their general managers more than we are. There's one that's paying more, which is the largest one, which is Taunton. And then there is a number, four, five, six, that are sort of right on the line, just slightly below what we're paying our general manager. So my sense is, and those are twenty twenty numbers, by the way. So in the meantime, these others have gotten bumps up in, in, over this past year. So that's why I'm leveraging in the, a four percent increase and a $6,000 bonus, or at least suggesting that. I believe the union increase this year is three percent. Is that correct? And so, you know, a one percentage point on top of what the union is getting, I think is quite frankly, too little, but that's my own opinion. Yes, Mr. Hennessy?
Do you or Colleen know what we've got, what we've done for increases for the GM over the last couple of years? Do you have that? Just in
Yes, in 2019, it was four percent. 2018, it was 4.5%. Seventeen was 4.5%. Sixteen was six percent. Fifteen was 3.6%. Fourteen was three percent. Her starting salary was 165. In other words, she was starting at a significantly lower salary in those days because, well, she was just hired. And we were bringing in a new person, had to prove that this person could handle the load and do whatever was needed. And I think, I think Colleen has done that.
Is it worth pulling up the slide of the comparison slide, John? I think, I think comparisons are very helpful.
No, no, that's, that's part of mean data, Dave, that I'm not
Okay.
sure that.
Okay, so if I may, just my, my reaction to the comparison is that I believe the numbers showed there's four. We have forty-one light plants. There's four who make more than Colleen. Three of them, I believe, is Taunton, Holyoke, and Braintree that make a little more, and they also run a second business, a broadband business in addition to electric utility. So there is another vertical that the manager is doing. So I think there's only, may only be one in the state that's higher than Colleen makes, which is 212,000. Plus, we provide Colleen with $800 a month for her vehicle. So I guess at, at some point, it's not really as much about performance or ratings as what is the market bear? What, what's our obligation to the ratepayer? And I feel like we're kind of at a very high salary now, and we have to think of it from the other perspective of just, well, what's the top of the market? And why would we want to go and be the most highest paid in the, in the state?
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That, that's all. And that, I, I just wanted, the perspective is that I think we're already at the second highest for an electric utility that's not also running a broadband business in the state of Massachusetts. And when we protect the ratepayer, we look at costs and we look down the road at all right, if, if there's a future moment, you have to hire a, a general manager, it sets this bar so much higher. And then I don't see the, the, the market justification for, for keeping going so much higher than
Let me respond to some of that then. In the first place, it wouldn't be the highest paid. It would still be Taunton. That would be the highest paid.
Right, that's a broad
Holyoke and Hudson are going through their process, even as we are, actually probably six months ago, because we're late to the game. They are significantly higher than the numbers that are shown on what I sent out here. So the, again, it's not a question of, of, you know, is it too much? The question is, what do you need to have in place to have a sophisticated, professional management team that's built over the last seven years that keeps us in the, basically the top number one tier for reliability and for inexpensive power in the state of Massachusetts? I mean, if you try to re, I mean, I'll be very blunt. You go out and try to replace someone at this time, this, it'll be almost very, very difficult. You're going to have to match easily, and you're probably have to give a significant bonus to someone to bring someone new in. And I hate saying this in front of Colleen, but, but that's just the fact of the matter. Whenever you're hiring someone away from another place, you, it's a significant bump. And so I think we're being pretty wise and how foolish.
I don't think there's any evidence for what you just said, but
There's total evidence in what I've just said. I can show you study after study, as can Mr. Hennessy, can do exactly the same thing. And as a matter of fact, if they'd like to comment on that, that's fine.
The MLD
I'd like to move this forward to a, to a vote, please. Phil, could you please read the motion with those numbers in it?
Is Dave said what he wants to say?
I think he did.
Yeah, I mean,
I'd see today.
We haven't heard from Bob and Phil about the number. Do you guys feel comfortable with the number, too?
I'm comfortable with the percentage of the raise, and if anything, in the course of a year that we've had. Two important things, I think, is, is the rate and the reliability. And, 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 and those two almost a criteria that we base everything on. And if we can keep the rates low and reliability is, is significantly lower than anybody, then we, then the general manager's accomplished the goal that, that we, we wanted that person to do. And if the revenue and stream is good, which it is, that's, that's, that's another positive that we have. Now, if we can go back and share that success with the employees that, that made that happen, then I, I think that's important to recognize that. That's, that's my take on that. I, I think four percent is a, you know, you're in a, you're in this industry, four percent's a, a good, a good raise. You're happy with that? I think even, even on the, on the bonus side, I think maybe even a little bit higher bonus, I'd, I'd be happy, I'd be more than willing to make that increase.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with both numbers because it, I think it's very consistent with, with raises we've given Colleen and the general manager position over the last, since I've been around. It's very, it's kind of right in the mid-range, and this has been an extremely difficult year. And I think she's met the challenge for this year. So I'm fine with the numbers the way they are.
Phil, would you like to comment?
Yeah. Well, you know, after hearing what Bob has to say, now I'm very comfortable with the numbers. Bob has kind of brought a perspective that I, I don't have. You know, you want to talk about accounting salaries, I'll talk about accounting salaries, but you know, I, I don't have, you know, I have no comparison as, as in the chart, which have up on the other screen right now as to what, what I've got. So based upon Bob's comments, I'm not comfortable with the numbers at this point. So.
Hey, could I ask for a rereading of the motion then with those numbers?
Very good. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve a four percent salary raise and a $6,000 bonus retroactive to January 1st, 2021, and to be paid as Ms. O'Brien chooses as ICMA, cash, or a combination of the two.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
You have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Stenbeck, I
Do we do any discussion at this point, or we're already voting?
Okay. We are, we already had a huge discussion.
Well, I would propose that it's a two percent raise with the sick, with, with a small bonus. I, I think this is too much. It's the highest, it's going to be, soon be the highest salary in the state. And I don't see the justification for it, but go ahead and do what you got to do.
I'd like to have a roll call vote, please, on the motion that Phil, Mr. Pacino has read. Mr. Stenbeck, I
Mr. Stenbeck, I
Mr. Hennessy, I Bob, your, your speaker's off.
Mr. Talbot?
Talbot, no.
Okay, thank you very much. That be shown the motion passed. Okay. Like to move on to the next motion. For reorganization of the RMLD Board of Commissioners. And Phil, would you like to read the motion, please?
Excuse me, I just have a point of order here.
Yeah.
Of, I don't think we've ever done a reorganization at this point in the cycle. And Phil, could you address whether the appropriateness of doing a reorganization at this point in the calendar year?
Absolutely. It's very close to when we usually do it anyway.
We do it after the election. You do it after when you have a new board.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I've decided that I would like to do the reorganization now, and I have the, I have the ability to be able to make that choice. I have, you know, I'm always striving to find a better process, Mr. Talbot, and, and trying to improve our processes and how we work. And I think that we need to have people on the board in a role that have had experience, that have worked with the board for some period of time. And I think it's very appropriate to do that. And if next month or the month after, you wish to have another motion to change or reorganize the board, you can certainly propose that. If we can do this at any time, there is no time that we can't do it. Yes, Mr. Hennessy, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dave. I, I've been six years, every time I think we did it after the election, when you have because I'm not even, we could have forty percent of the board not even here, you know, it's certainly not me. It seems like to pick leaders for a board that couple, two, one or two of the members aren't even going to be here. It seems premature. Phil, have we ever done, can I ask Phil, have we ever done this in the past before an election?
Have we ever done it? No, we have not. We have not. Not that I can remember at any, any one point in time, no.
Yes, Bob?
Man, I, I came in last year and I voted a chair, clueless, absolutely clueless. Yeah, I, you know, I, I totally agree with the statement that I've been here a year. At least I have an understanding of what's going on. I walked into the day one and I voted. Vote for what? I have no idea, right? So I think prior to, it helps, gives you perspective. I, I, I think, you know, asking somebody new to vote, it's, it's just, you have no, you have, you have no basis on anything. So I, I, I think this is a better, better process.
It really does provide continuity. And I think, again, all of our processes, like we look at any one of our policies, review them, and we try to change them for the better. I think this is for the better.
If I may, Mr. Chair, you, you've just heard from Phil, you're breaking a norm of thirty X years of a board chooses its officers of the board that's constituted, not two weeks before the board might be different. It's highly irregular. It's disenfranchising at least one future board member. I certainly have no, the only way this could go tonight is, is Bob and Phil, and I certainly have no issue down the road of next month of, of them being officers, but this is just not the time to choose officers. You choose officers when you have a new board, as we've done for thirty X years. It's just
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Talbot, but I disagree with you. And I have the motion here, and I would like to ask for a reading of the motion.
Has anybody seconded it?
I've not read
We haven't read the motion yet.
I have not read the motion yet. I'd like to ask Dave Hennessy, I mean, what, what's your feeling? Do you think you should vote to now at this point or not? Dave?
I, I don't. I, I don't think I should be voting for a board, a board leadership that I'm not part of. I don't, I don't think it's right to do it now. I agree with you. I agree with your history and what Dave Talbot's saying right now. It just seems a little bit out of order for us.
Well, it's very possible that you're going to have people on the board next month who, as Mr. Coulter said, have no idea what they're doing, have no idea who to vote for, or why they would be voting for them, and have no history. And it's just, it just seems awkward to me. So, so just because, I, I'll get, I'll get to you in just a minute, Dave. It seems awkward to me that when you've got a process which doesn't make any sense, even though you haven't done it for thirty years, doesn't mean you should reexamine it and maybe do something for the better. I think this is for the better. Mr. Hennessy, you had something to say?
Well, you know, Bob gave the point that he didn't really know, you know, maybe he hadn't watched any of the, the board meetings before becoming on, before joining the board, but there might be somebody that's running for election that's paying close attention to what we've been doing over the last couple of years and, and might have some important things to say and with the discussion about who should be leader. And I don't know, it just seems, I, I just disagree with doing it now.
Just to, Mr., Bob, please?
But I, I, again, it's circular conversation, right? But just the, the benefit of meeting people, understanding the board process. You, you, you're right, Dave, you know, having the, this knowledge of everybody coming in here, you don't, you don't walk into RMLD blind, but you are absolutely blind to the process when you come here, you know, that, that, that is very, very true. Just like any job, any, anywhere that you go to, there's a culture, there's a process, you need to absorb that. I've, I've had the ability now to be here for a year. I think to ask somebody on, literally on, on day one to, to vote for leadership, that, that is such an extremely difficult process, I, I, or, or ask of anybody. I, I did think, I think you have the knowledge of being here for years. So you, you can impart that before you go, and, and make a judgment before you go versus somebody coming in and just being, it being very difficult for them. Thank you. Again, personal point of view, right? Thank you.
Mr. Pacino, would you read the motion, please?
I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling like I'm the swing vote here. I'm feeling like Judge Roberts for current L.A., you know? I see two for and two against.
You are the middle square.
You are.
I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this, Mr. Chair, with the fact that we, we're split. I, I, I'm, I'm going to say that we do not make this motion. I'm sorry to say that. I do think it was a good idea to do this because who knows, you know, we're not scheduled to meet until April the 22nd. You know, there could be no chair between the time of the election, April fourth, fourth and to the 22nd at that point. So, but I'm uncomfortable with the fact that it's, we're too split on this. We, we just, we don't have enough consensus. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, at this point.
So I certainly understand. Yes, Mr. Coulter, please?
Maybe we wait six months, you know, let that new member become comfortable with the board and extend your, the chair for, for a few months and maybe modify the, modify the vote to allow the new member
You could do that.
to at least gain some experience of a few meetings and then make a choice.
Yeah, there's a possibility we could do that and just have a sunset on the chair, make it a three-month, make it a three-month term. If that's agreeable to everybody at this point.
That would be the new date that you would elect.
Yeah.
A new, a new chair.
Yeah.
That would seem to be reasonable to me, too. I mean, I, you know, I am trying, again, I'll reiterate it. I am trying to change the process for the better. But I agree with Bob. Having, you know, even when I came in, I didn't know anybody or anything or any of the financials or how the place was managed. And we had to really turn the entire organization around. And we're starting with not a whole lot. So we really need, my feeling is, you need leadership, you need someone who's been there, done that, and some kind of continuity. It's basically about continuity to be able to carry it over. And having someone totally new, or asking someone, as Mr. Coulter says, to vote for, for someone and not even know what their, their capabilities are, just seems very, very strange to me. I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
It's how, like, it's, it's how elected boards operate. They, they choose their officers when there's a new board, and then they choose their officers. It's how it works.
But not every board is that way, Mr. Talbot. Maybe you think so, but it's not true. You've got certain opinions which are, I'm sure, valid in many different areas. That's not necessarily true here. But given what Mr. Pacino has just mentioned, I think that going for something like a three-month, you know, hiatus before the election of a new chair is fine with me.
I don't see why that's different than what you're already proposing.
I'm proposing that we, well, we either have an election now, we have it in three months.
Well, I think you could, you're a new board, you could have this discussion next April. You could decide together when you want to vote for new leadership.
Just like every year.
Yeah. So if there's a timing change, you should probably decide that. Your new board should decide that.
So if there's a timing change, you should probably decide that. Your new board should decide that together.
Yeah, I guess we will forego the, uh, motions then, uh, since, uh, Mr. Pacino does not feel comfortable with it. Um, and that's the end of the session for tonight, uh, for this. I'd like to move into executive session. Uh, would you read that, Phil?
Yeah. Move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter one sixty-four, section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss competently sensitive issues regarding options for power supply and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of the general.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
A roll call vote. Mr. Stenbeck, aye?
Mr. Hennessy, aye?
Mr. Stenbeck, aye?
Mr. Coulter, aye?
Okay, great. Uh, we'll see you all in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right.